Hello.
Thanks for all that material. All in the rain, I'm gonna be reading that until like the day after tomorrow.
But you have a little. Nothing else you wanted to do, right?
Actually tomorrow should be decent weather, it's a little chilly out there today.
It's such a beautiful sunny day after.
Well, that's true.
Hey Drew.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hey Drew.
Hi.
Some of us look like we haven't moved since the last time we were.
Is that where you were this morning, Ingrid?
Yep.
Same place, huh?
Same place.
Still in the closet.
Exactly, she looks like she's in the closet.
And I am.
And Glenn always has the bearish walls.
I'm working on it.
It's like you're temporary.
Maybe we could buy you a picture.
Right.
We went down to see the Rehoboth Art League Young at Art. Exhibition is from elementary and middle schools. And I tell you, there are a couple of things in there, if they were for sale, I would readily have bought them, they were fanciful. Fun and bright and adorable. I should probably see if they're, if the young artists are wanna sell.
Glenn doesn't show it, but he's probably got a dartboard behind him.
Yeah, with our faces on it.
With our faces on it, exactly.
Yeah, right, right, no, it's as bland as it looks, honestly.
Okay.
Is that one of those light deprivation lamps you've got over your right shoulder?
No, it's actually just a plain old lamp, there's an Alexa sitting beside it, but just a plain old lamp. How'd everything go this morning?
Good.
Good.
It turns out that there were questions that you might have.
Oh yeah?
That you might have lent a hand to, but that's all right.
We'll get you.
At some point, I think an exploration of takings law. Is gonna be necessary. Cause there was a, there was a suggestion at one point, for example, that. That real property taxes be increased and. The additional revenue be put into a, I think they called it a resiliency fund. For purposes of buying out people. After an event or maybe even before an event. The city might have deemed to be in an unbuildable. Or not, should not be rebuilt upon location. And the basis of that is of course. Liability for takings. And I think, I think we need to, at some point, that needs to be. Fully fleshed out.
I think we need.
I think the term was resiliency relief fund.
Resiliency relief fund.
Yeah.
Bonnie?
Otherwise known as people who live in the floodplain relief fund.
Bonnie, I think. You wanna buy them out after the event, it's cheaper then.
Yeah. Could be. Could be.
I think we need to look at what Bethany's doing, cause the illusion was that, or the reference was made that Bethany's already doing this.
Really?
Have a fund already.
Isn't all of Bethany in the floodplain?
All of Bethany is on a barrier island. So that's kinda where.
Where are you gonna buy out, I mean, they're all in the same boat, more or less.
Exactly. Yeah.
So that, that would be interesting to know.
Well. Yeah, I'll reach out to. Rosemary Hardeman and see what they've got, what they really have, Cliff could certainly, Cliff probably would certainly know.
Yeah, and of course, what it's really, what it's for.
Of 22 attendees at this point. Panada has his hand up, I think he wants to be let in.
Yeah, I've been going through, there's a number of people who've come in that way, so.
Yeah, I saw 37 on the, on the Zoom call.
Yeah, but attendees, panelists are 7, 18 now, but attendees are 20.
Did I sneak in the back door?
You did.
Keep your windows locked.
You've got seven planning commissioners on, I think all of council is here. Both of the presenters are here, so.
You may as well go ahead and get started. So it is 4:02 on Monday, the 29th of March, and we're here. First of all, I want to thank Scott and Steve for taking time to be with us this afternoon. And we're here for presentation discussion regarding the source water protection law. Focusing on the policy and science relating to the excellent recharge areas. And again, I want to thank Steve and Scott for being with us today, and we look forward to your presentation, I think. We did have, we asked for questions in advance, and. We did have some because they came in, and I think both Scott and Steve have received those questions in advance. And we, I think we'll go ahead and get started. Scott or Steve, who wants to go first? Okay, Steve.
I can start, hello everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us. I don't have, I mean, I may share my screen if I can at times, if necessary, but I don't have like a formal presentation, if you. Will, but I'll give you a good bit of background, a little bit about myself, am I involved with the Source Water Program, so. I'm currently an environmental program administrator for the Division of Water. The Water Supply Section, as well as the Wetlands, the Aqueous Land Sections are the programs that fall under me. With regards to, and the Source Water Protection Programs within the Water Supply Program. My background with the Source Water Protection Program, I was originally with the department decades ago when. Congress passed the Safe Drinking Water Act amendments in 1996. That required the Source Water Programs to be established in all the states. I was a principal hydrologist with the state, working with the management, the time to develop the state's Source Water Protection Plan. That EPA approved in 1999. That subsequently became the Source Water Protection, or portions of that enabled the Source Water Protection Act, which in 2001. Is now what the Source Water Law is. So it's kinda there from the, from the start of that, the inception of that, through its actual development and codification. So I was with the department for 10 years, I left the department for about 15 years, was in private consulting. All along the Mid-Atlantic region. I had doing a lot of this type of work as a private consultant. Then I've been back to the state for about six years, seven years now, in now my current role for the, for the Source, for the Division of Water. I think to start off and kind of set the stage, I want to be very, very consistent with a couple aspects of the Source Water Protection Law. It's definitively a state law, but the law itself was specifically not giving the state. Specific powers, it did not create a state ordinance, it did not create a state, you know, thou shalt do this throughout the state. What it did say was, it was, its intent was to provide the resources for the municipalities or jurisdictions of over 2,000 people. To enact the protective measures themselves. So legislation did not give, legislators did not give Denrec the authority to enact the protective ordinances. They said, we need to provide the tools and the information to the municipalities for them to do it. And it's very, I think it's very Delaware, it's very, you know, there's local differences, there's lots of differences between. Opinions and also between geology in certain locations. So the Source Water Law said the municipalities, Lewis being one of them. Had to adopt protective ordinances, it gave models, temp model ordinances, it gave the actual mappings that were done for where the wellhead protection areas go. And then we're providing guidance for it, so what's in your ordinance is, I'm gonna say yours. But the intent of the Source Water Law, I can absolutely talk about, and. So I'm gonna kinda shut up right there and see if Scott wants to add his two cents.
Sure, thanks for having me in today. I've been here in Delaware, working for Delaware Geological Survey since 1984. I'm coming up on 37 years in October. So this is not my first rodeo. Back in the late 80s, people at Denrec, in the Water Supply, what was the Water Supply Branch at that time. Approached me to look for some guidance and. Advice and actually asked for my assistance in developing. The technical tools for identifying recharge resource protection areas. This was driven not only by Denrec, but also by Newcastle County, which has a parallel ordinance in their code. To protect recharge resource protection areas. Newcastle County had a previous go around with this back in the 80s. And they found that their first go around, the ordinance was too vague, and the technical details of how to do it were not detailed enough. To make the law work, so that we came back, they came to us to make it better and make it enforceable, make it fair. Person, and make it technically sound. So we developed the methods in the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s, it was summarized in a publication of the Delaware Geological Survey. And then we proceeded to map Kent and Sussex Counties under my view, and then Newcastle County was done under John Tally and Kate Gittoriak. The work proceeded through about 2001, when we finished the last map. Soon after that, everything was all merged together, all the scenes were taken out of the different, between the different mapping project areas. And released to Denrec, it's in a published form, there's a final report summarizing methods and statistical summaries of everything we did. The relationships between recharge. Geologic materials, the relationships between recharge and groundwater flow, recharge and contaminant transport. Recharge and infiltration, so lots of different pieces were studied as part of this effort. More than, I would say more than 20 people, most of them students helped me with this during the initial years. Later years, I hired a couple professionals that came in to take the day-to-day. Field mapping exercise over, as I had other responsibilities to take care of. The work itself, the final publication, I think it's dated 2004, so this is now more than 15 years in the past. It's fairly mature, I have to admit, I don't remember all the details anymore of every single hole that I drilled, there were over 600 of them. Or every line on every map that was drawn. I did review the work that I did for the Lewis K Penloken Project area. And I don't see really any reason to change the lines on the map at this point. I did mention about how to make this fair for people, this was something that came up in Newcastle County. And so we developed the process to challenge where the lines are on the maps, and. My experience with that is through work that was done in Newcastle County, there were actually very, very few challenges made to the maps. I think there was only one successful one in 20 year plus years that this ordinance has been in place. Anecdotally, I've heard that lots of people have tried or have investigated the possibility of changing the lines for their property. And usually they do the work and come back and say, it's not gonna happen, things are pretty, are close enough that you're not gonna win your challenge. So that's the administrative and kind of logistical way that that project ran. Since that time. Denrec programs for. Underground storage tanks, hazardous waste, solid waste. And stormwater have adopted pieces of the. Of the recharge mapping. Toolset for their programs, and as well, and also Department of Agriculture's pesticides program. So the work has found its way into a number of state regulatory programs. To me, that's always a good sign when lots of people jump on the bandwagon and say, this is a good idea. And we're gonna adopt it to fit our programs. I had no part in the development of the regulations for those different programs, I was asked to review, I provided technical comment on their interpretation of what I did and their implementation. But for the most part, their actual regulatory, regulatory language, all the thou shalt nots and thou shalls, that. Thou shall do this or that, that was up to the individual program managers. And to me, it looks like they pretty much got it right as they read it, another good sign that the information that was provided to them was understandable. And made sense for what they were trying to accomplish. So come here in 2020, 2021, City of Lewis is having questions, this is kind of new, and this is new and novel again, right? We haven't heard anything quite like this for quite some time, it's probably over 10 years ago, when a lot of the towns and the counties. Started trying to adopt this into their ordinances. So this is what Lewis is going through now, is a little bit later in the game than most of the other entities within the state of Delaware. Like Steve, I didn't prepare any. Formal presentations, I do have the presentation I used for Lewis Board of Public Works a few weeks back, has some great illustrations that. Will show you what some of the technical concepts mean, if we need to use them, I will definitely bring them up and ask to share the screen. So with that, I think the main reason Steve and I are here today is to answer your questions, and Anne Marie was good enough to gather them all up. And send them along. To me, and it looks like there's two categories of questions, some about. Administrative regulatory law kinds of things, and I will defer to Steve on some of those. And then there's some of the, some questions that are more about technical issues, and I'll be glad to answer those. So for the council and planning board members there, is there particular order you want these in, you want the legal questions answered first? Or do you want the technical questions answered first?
Why don't we answer the technical questions first?
Alrighty. So there's quite, there's. A few different themes that I pick up on here. And. One of the big themes is the relationship between recharge protection and your wellhead protection. And I will tell you that they were done separately and independently. And they cover similar overlapping types of resource questions or resource issues, but they are not necessarily directly related to each other. So recharge protection areas are there to protect, are there to. Manage water resources as a whole, and that includes drinking water, but it also includes stormwater and infiltration. And when I, when I say stormwater infiltration, I'm always reminded to mention the term hydrologic cycle. Water is always moving through your, through, through your area, wherever you are, it's not static or stagnant. Whatever rainfall occurs, some of it infiltrates and some of it runs off over the surface. And the recharge protection area mapping project characterizes the ability of geologic materials to transmit water. And the excellent recharge areas transmit more water more quickly than anything else in the, all the other lower categories of recharge. One of the issues that seems to. Come up frequently, or come up from time to time, and it came up in Newcastle County, is there tends to be. The idea that you can manage your water resources on a. Tenth acre or, you know, 5,000 square foot parcel basis, that just doesn't happen anywhere. The water that falls in your town is gonna find the path of least resistance from where it hits the ground to where it's going. And it doesn't care about property lines, but it does care about impervious cover. And it does, it is strongly influenced by the characteristics of the geologic materials which it falls on. So as you recharge, protection is giving you some. Protection also against excessive stormwater runoff. If you pave over everything, all the water that falls on the ground is gonna try to run off. And where does it go, well, it's gonna go to the easiest path to the, to the lowest point in the landscape, or to the bay, or the canal, or whatever's nearby. In the area on the beachside, I've did the Google Streets View, and I see. A whole variety of development styles from older, older homes sitting on. More natural kind of landscapes to giant homes sitting on completely paved surfaces and elevated several feet above their neighbors. So in that kind of situation, water that falls on that new property with all that pavement and impervious cover. All that water winds up in the neighbor's yard before it goes anywhere else. So we think about, okay, if that, if that yard was not paved over, a lot of that water would soak in. And would never get into the stormwater runoff arena, and it wouldn't have to be handled by public infrastructure. Once that water runs off into public infrastructure, the city's on the hook for taking care of it, storm sewers, retention basins. And then following that. If it causes a flood, well then other infrastructure is at risk from being submerged. So that's the water quantity side of that issue. Now, keep in mind, rainfall in the, for the large part is fresh water, and so the. The water infiltrating is fresh. On the other hand, the water in the bay and the canal is salty, near seawater or at seawater salinity. Seawater has much different chemistry than the fresh water that would be infiltrating. And any buried infrastructure that's exposed to salt water is gonna undergo a lot more chemical. Reaction with the water than if it had been in contact with fresh water, so things like concrete, weather's really fast in salt water compared to fresh water. Unless you build the concrete specifically for salt water. Any buried wires, any metal buried in the ground is gonna corrode much faster in salt water than in fresh water. And so that's electrical, traffic control. Any pieces of the stormwater system that are metal. In the homeowner arena, any buried metal. Associated with plumbing, electrical service. Any buried utilities is also subject to that, to those kinds of issues, so. In some sense, the recharge that you allow into the ground. Is going to offset the salt water that will attempt to get in there under storm or under high tide flooding conditions. Under most, under most circumstances, the fresh and salt water are in balance, and the fresh water holds the salt water out, keeps it out towards the bay. But. When you, when you cover over all your infiltration areas, you're going to allow for more salt water to. You're gonna reduce the amount of fresh water that's in the ground, reduce the outflow of fresh water. And then when you reduce that outflow, you're going to allow more salt water in, so that, that's another segment where protecting your recharge areas. Will do you a service in the long run. One of the other themes of questions I have, are lots of questions about sea level rise, and what does that mean? To the water table and salt water, et cetera. I would say that some of these questions have a few of the technical issues unnecessarily tangled and complicated. And that's not unusual, it's not a very, it's not a perfectly simple thing to try to explain. So now, where you are. You know, sea level is right there, you could see it all the time. And the water table beneath the area in question, just a couple feet down, sometimes it's at land surface, we know that when storms happen. When a lot of rainfall happens, the water table will rise and then retreat again. And that goes with the concept that the water's not stagnant, the water is always moving, much, just much more slowly in the ground. But much quicker in an excellent recharge area than in areas that are, have lower permeability or lower capacity to transmit water away. So you really can't stop the water by paving over, it's just gonna let, it's gonna go somewhere else. It's always better in terms of water resources and managing water to let nature take its course. And work with that rather than try to artificially. Channel it, move it, or whatever. It's just gonna become more expensive over time. And that leads into the next issue, sea level rise. Sea level rise right now is two to three millimeters per year. In Lewis, we can see the effect of that on the water table in a nearby monitoring well near the library. Over the past. 25 years since we've been monitoring there, there is a significant rise in the water table at that location, even though it is a half mile inland from the canal. So now as sea level rises, the water table is gonna rise, but the water table is still gonna be fresh. Under most conditions. And the whole thing about sea level rise that can make this more complicated, there is a long-term gradual rate of sea level rise. And then superimposed on top of that are lunar tides and storm events that can drive salty water in. So even though, you know, you might say, hey, sea level is. All, is gonna be three, three foot higher or four feet higher than it is right now by year 2100. And there still will be pieces of Lewis sticking up on the beachside, sticking up above sea level. That's under normal, non-storm, non-high tide conditions, there will be times, many more times of the year that that area floods out. From the combination of rising water table and rising. from the combination of rising water table and rising sea level. The rising sea level is going to impact, impact the height of the, or the depth of the water table, many thousands of feet inland from the bay and from any body of tidal water. This is going to have a profound impact on the city of Lewis and all coastal communities in Delaware. And all the things I talked about with rising water tables, flooded buried utilities, chemical weathering of buried infrastructure, all that's going to be a big public infrastructure expense in the next several decades. And let's see if I got another one here. So there are some questions about where we are monitoring. The question says, does Denrick have any groundwater monitoring wells? Denrick doesn't have groundwater monitoring wells. They, they hire my, my agency to do that work for the state. And it's a symbiotic and cooperative agreement. Denrick has access to federal dollars that subsidize the cost of doing groundwater monitoring for the state of Delaware. The Delaware Geological Survey is organized at the University of Delaware and is set up to be able to do that kind of work much more efficiently and much more sustainably than Denrick can. So we have groundwater monitoring wells, like I mentioned, at the, by the Lewis Library. There's another one at the old power plant. Closer to the canal, that one's not being monitored right now. And are in the general area around Lewis within a 10-mile radius. There are dozens of monitoring wells and of those dozens of monitoring wells, we are actively looking at groundwater levels in about 10 of them. So we have a pretty good handle of what's happening long-term. Some of these wells have 30 to 40 years of record. I will tell you that when the, the wells are closest to the body of tidal water, we see the impact of tides on, on the water levels in the wells. If the well is close enough, we see salt in it, not as salty as the bay or the canal, but we see some salt higher than inland. There are some questions that kind of indicate people think that water in the ground is not moving. And that if you pave it over somehow, the water's not going to move. And if you keep more, more water from getting into the ground, it's going to keep flooding from happening. That is not right at all. That water is moving. If you let water into the ground, it will continue to move and it'll go from where it is to where it wants, where, to a lower elevation where it wants to get out. So you can't pave your way out of this kind of issue. What will happen over time is you will lose the amount of storage volume in the ground available to you for short-term events. And eventually, as if sea level rises as far as predicted by 2100, there won't be any land anyway. So you have a, a, a long-term planning horizon where you have much bigger issues to deal with than groundwater recharge. But in, in general, what the groundwater recharge BMPs will do for you is buy you some time where you will have less flooding than if you don't do it at all. So I tried to answer the general major question themes that I see in here.
Scott, one, one of the themes that was in there was the relation of this area to the drinking water supply.
Yeah, as I mentioned, the two are not directly related at all. And they never were intended to be directly related. They have nothing to do with each other in any state regulation. And they have nothing to do with each other in any other local ordinances in the state of Delaware. They manage a different part, recharge area protection manages a different part of the hydrologic cycle. And it's a bigger part, right? It's handling the law, the big questions about precipitation, infiltration and runoff. And managing, and because of the connection between surface water streams, freshwater streams and groundwater, it's also in, strongly impacts the quality of water and the amount of water and the timing of the delivery of water to streams. If you look at most stormwater ordinances, it's all about slowing the runoff of water from land surface into the stream so you don't destroy the aquatic habitat there or destroy any infrastructure and drainage capacity in that stream valley. So yeah, there's no direct relationship between source water protection or, and recharge protection. And that's because that they are only indirectly related. So now how are they indirectly related? If you cover up all your recharge areas in your, around your wellhead or where your well is getting source water, the water is not going to stop, right? It's going to get in the ground somewhere else and come from somewhere else farther away. If you pave over 20% of your wellhead protection area, you're not going to lose all the water. It's just going to come from somewhere else. That, and that question is, what is that somewhere else and what is the water quality at that point? Whereas if that's an issue for the city of Lewis, if your wellhead area where the source, where the source water is coming from feeding your well is coming from an area that is, is salty, that's a problem. If the new recharge area for your well, for your wells is now a highly developed commercial area with polluted runoff, that's a problem for your water supply. In the particular case of Lewis, right? What's happening beachside has no impact on your wellhead area. And I would say it's, it's not appropriate to consider those two, those two areas to be equivalent or to consider recharge protection to be at the beachside area to be less important than protecting your wellhead area. You're protecting different kinds of assets in the town for different timescales.
May I follow up on that question, Anne Marie? Scott, to the extent that groundwater protection is indirectly related to drinking water protection, I thought I had heard that the aquifer that connects to the the wellhead area went underneath, extended underneath the canal. So to some extent, freshwater recharge into the beach area impeded the intrusion of salt water into the drinking water aquifer. I hope I stated that clearly enough.
I understand what you're saying.
Is that accurate at all?
So now there is a report on your wellhead protection area, right? We, Delaware Geological Survey not, did not only Lewis's wellhead area, we did Rehoboth and all the tidewater utilities wells in that region between Five Points and Rehoboth back. We had to do them all at the same time because the resource is continuous through that area and trying to segregate them into different little pieces was not technically sound. So when we looked at Lewis's wellhead area, it does not extend under the canal. The source water area extends to the south and to the west towards, you know, south towards that stream there, I can't remember the name of it. And then to the west towards Route 1 and points west of that. Important to keep in mind is that your protection area for the wellhead is only for the area that contributes water within a five-year period of time. The actual source water footprint for your wellhead area is 10 to 10 to 15 times larger. But none of it extends to the east toward the canal. And so then it won't extend underneath, no, it won't extend underneath Delaware Bay or underneath beachside Lewis. So now what, what functions do those provide out there east of the canal? It's got fresh water, right? Don't let anybody tell you differently. There's, there's been testing done out there. There's plenty of fresh water. We haven't tested by the Lewis beachside, but east of the canal, we've done lots of work. And there's lots of freshwater out there. So in a way, that is a, a bubble of freshwater pressure that keeps the ocean out of, from moving westward. Does it protect what's coming from the canal towards your wellfield? No. But it's all connected underground. And I would say that no one can predict what could happen in 50, 60 years in the future in, with respect to your, with the well, the existing wellfield and the water quality that's going to be happening there. That's going to take some more work.
God, I think what you were describing is what I think is known as, is it called the, this zone of dispersion? Where you have this bubble that's keeping the salt water out. Is that, is that a fair description and is that the term used? Zone of dispersion?
No, not really, right? So the, the fresh, freshwater and saltwater are of, they have different densities, right? Fresh salty water is two and a half times, are two and a half percent denser than freshwater. And what that causes is that they don't mix under static conditions in the ground, right? Static means nothing's moving. So there's kind of think of oil and water. They don't mix like oil and water. However, that's not, that's just the first cut. There's a couple of things that can happen. There's, there is diffusion of salt across that boundary. And the other thing that's happening is the water is moving, the freshwater is moving, the salt water is moving. And at that boundary where the two are moving past each other, there is, there are dispersive things happening caused by that movement of water. And that moves salt landward and it moves freshwater seaward through a narrow zone, right? So that's a mixing zone. You can get mixing zones from storm tides that wash over and infiltrate salt water from above. That can happen too. So it gets pretty complicated in a hurry with all the different pathways that salt water can take. And being in the subsurface where you can't see it directly.
And if I, if I can add, just to maybe help clarify a couple of things. You know, Scott just, you know, said it really well, but an example project that I've had, at one point in time, I had to do a water balance for an island in Montauk Sound, New York, right at the very end of, of Long Island, surrounded by seawater. And we put in a bunch of wells in that, in that, on that island and did salinity profiles through the wells. And what you see is you see a lens of freshwater sitting on top of the denser salt water, right? And that freshwater, like Scott said, is running off. And the, the whole reason why we're doing it to see whether that lens of freshwater was sustainable. You know, if you cut it, if you cut it off, would it, all the salt water would just come, come in because the freshwater wouldn't keep it, you know, pushing it, pushing it away. So if you want to think about it in a very simplified area, think about it just, you know, if you had a sandy island, rain falling on it, there's going to be a lens of freshwater sitting on top of the saltwater. The thickness of that lens depends on how high the island is and how much it rains on the island. But that's, that's kind of a very simplified way of looking at it. In this area here, the other thing to, to also make sure of, and I, I agree with Scott, trying to figure out exactly what will happen as sea level rises. And in addition with, what happens at the canal. But it's a fallacy to think that because there's salt water in the canal, that salt water goes all the way down to the base of the unconfined aquifer that Lewis uses, that, that Rehoboth uses. It's kind of a weird, you know, the, the sediments at the bottom of the canal aren't directly, you know, highly conductive, but there is salt water there. So it's kind of an inverted lens under the canal, which you expect to see where you have the salt water in that surface water body flowing, slowly sinking in through the sediments. And there's going to be a profile salinity gradient in the verse going from the canal down into depth, into the, into the deeper aquifer. That aquifer as a whole is what Scott was talking to is exactly why, you know, we had, we had DGS do the, the modeling of the Lewis-Rehoboth district, not just each of those individual communities. Because it's a shared resource in the, in that, in the area. I mean, it's a shared resource across most of Sussex County, if you want to think about it that way. But, you know, the other piece, it's kind of to want to point out, it's, it's not your issue. It's not something that you guys have to deal with in your ordinance, your, your, your thoughts. But the, the town of Henlopen Acres, their production wells are in the Columbia Aquifer, that unconfined aquifer on the ocean side of the canal. There's enough freshwater there for them to use for their withdrawals, right? Not necessarily an ideal situation, you know, from, from a protective measure piece, but I just want to put in perspective that, that little lens I was talking about on that island, there's enough on the other side of the canal for Henlopen Acres to use it for their purposes. So I don't know if that helps you guys.
Thank you. Summer, you got a question?
So Scott, looking at the two different sort of mapping efforts, you know, I've got on a map on my screen, the excellent recharger is, is your, is the DGS process, it delineates them. I've also got the wellhead protection area for Lewis. And as you said, that wellhead protection area is determined by a number of variables, including what time of travel you, you choose. And that it, you know, the ultimate area that supplies water is a much larger area. Is it possible that there is an intersection between those two areas on the town side of the canal, on the, on the southwest side of the canal? Like along our edge, there's an area where there's excellent recharge area that would be in the Columbia Aquifer. It'd be on the same side of the canal as the wellhead protection area. And at least from questions that I've seen in this source water protection dialogue that's built over the last, you know, month, we'll say. I think there's been those that have said, well, we don't need to worry about source water protection, particularly on the, on the, on the beach side of the canal. I just, I'm a little concerned about throwing out an ordinance that, that talks about source water protection when we've got these perhaps commingling needs on the, on the town side of the canal. Do you have any sense that they, you know, that that intersection might be important? That the fact that they're both on the same side of the canal, you know, we, we, we might want to treat that excellent recharge area differently?
Um, so the way I would, I would look at that question, the, the one, the excellent recharge areas on the west side of the canal that are near your source water area for your wells. They are a very important resource to the quantity and quality of water reaching your wellfield. To that extent, that's something to be very concerned about, about the type of development and the type of building that occurs around the source water area for the wellfield. Because the, the downside of not taking care of it is so much bigger than if you deal, than the area to the east of the canal. East of the canal, it's true. No one uses water there anymore that we know about for drinking water. The pharmaceutical plant out there used to pump salt water out from underneath Delaware Bay, from the harbor there and, and make malox out of it, right? So the aquifer is very productive. They can pump lots and lots of water out of it, but it's all salty. The issue on the east side of the canal is all about maintaining, maintaining freshwater pressure to keep the salt water from getting underneath your island. And man, and then that's one. The other big issue is managing stormwater. You don't want to pave everything over or you're going to have a lot of runoff that impacts both public and privately held infrastructure in a big way.
Just, just to build on that, that point, my sense is based on what you've said so far, the more that we do pave it, the faster what freshwater falls on that area between the canal and the bay, the faster it likely runs off into a saltwater area like the canal or the bay, rather than going into this freshwater lens that Mr. Smaler referred to. You know, we haven't done our job. We want to try to keep as much of that freshwater in that lens that's sitting on top of the saltwater over there. So, so the coverage is, the limiting the pervious coverage is important to maintain that fresh water.
Yeah, you want, you know, the maintaining the fresh water is important for, for infrastructure that's in contact with it, right? The other piece is, you know, the dealing with your stormwater issues. You're going to have a lot more stormwater volume to deal with if you pave everything or stormwater, stormwater infrastructure is very expensive to construct and it's expensive to maintain. So anything, it, it's like any conservation measure, anything you don't have to build is usually the cheapest way to deal with it than, than solutions that have to be constructed. Then then solutions that have to be constructed. So that that's a pretty common sense way to look at at managing that.
So so the other question, and maybe I'm creating a big mess here, but I assume that a question that's on many people's minds is, okay, so what? What numbers matter? You know, does twenty percent matter? Does forty five percent matter? Does sixty five percent matter? And I mean impervious cover percentages, you know, how do we, how do we, how do we crack that nut?
Right, so uh in the region, right, this is not just Delaware, this is the whole mid-Atlantic with observations of what happens. To uh water quality and habitat in the aquatic environment. When you hit that twenty percent, around twenty percent threshold, bad things start to happen. You get excessive erosion. You smother uh the habitat for plants and animals. And so that might not sound like a so what, it's just plants and animals, houses are more important. Um, it will change the way your town looks, right? If you uh. Put all that stormwater, you know, you take that stormwater runoff and route it to what is now a salt marsh. It's not going to be a salt marsh anymore. It's going to be loaded with, it's going to be fragmites. It's going to be a whole different plant community. Then on top of that, you're going to have issues with with sediment that's carried by the runoff, right? You're gonna fill in low areas with that and things that used to be marshes or ponds will now be something else that's less attractive. All your stormwater infrastructure then will have to do, will have to be maintained more regularly to pull the sediment out of it. If you continue to pour more and more runoff and sediment in Taylor. So uh that's one of the other, another big reason in the stormwater community, they tried to slow the flow. And route the runoff back to someplace where it will infiltrate rather than putting it into a stormwater conveyance and discharge system.
And I I. I'm sorry, if you just talked about routing freshwater to the saltwater marshes and the impact on it. Is the inverse also true that uh by reducing the infiltration and reducing this freshwater lens? That we're going to see impact on the flora and fauna that's reliant upon the freshwater aspect?
There will be places where the geometry of that system is just right for that. You could have a freshwater marsh and there's some around the inland bays, I don't know about in your town. Uh where freshwater discharges and you have a freshwater aquatic community. Yeah, if you don't like, if you don't keep feeding freshwater into it, saltwater will take its place.
I I was thinking more about trees and things like that. Uh that are not as salt tolerant.
So if you have trees in that area and you start inundating them with salty water. Uh they will die and there are places all up and down the Delaware Bay coastline where we have these ghost forests. There's some really cool stories online, there's videos, photos, the whole bit. Um, and this was, this this happened in response to the sea level rise in the past several hundred years.
I have a question, um Scott, Scott, I think you mentioned something about, I I wrote the no, but maybe you said something about. It doesn't care about boundaries or lines. And this relates to the the idea of the twenty percent within the. Excellent recharge area. If you look at the maps, it extends into Cape Henlopen State Park, which is largely an undeveloped area. Uh, so when you talk about, or if we use twenty percent as a best number. Is it fair to use Cape Henlopen State Park as an undeveloped area as part of that hundred percent? If it's part of the excellent recharge area?
Wow, um now you're getting into a gray area that mixes legal issues with the technical issues from a technical standpoint. I wouldn't count on Cape Henlopen as protecting the Lewis Beach area from saltwater.
And the the other piece I want to I want to add in here too is just remember, and Scott, you know, spoke to us earlier. The the recharge mapping was done statewide. Mapping the recharge potential of the top portions of the aquifer. It's not a political decision. It's an actual mapping of the characteristics of the subsurface sediments. So the fact that Henlopen maps that way me- means that it meets the criteria that DGS used to establish that as the excellent recharge areas. The other thing I would say is that we focused on in the source water ordinance or source water law. Since the ordinance, source water law, we focused on the excellent, the entire state has excellent to pour. It's not like it doesn't recharge elsewhere, it just doesn't recharge as well. In these locations that are mapped as excellent, it reach, it has the potential to recharge. The fastest or the or the most volume per time in area. So I just want to make the distinction that the mapping that was done was politics, regulations, agnostic, right? It's done as a science that the D, that's why we hired DGS to do it, you know? Um, how that's implemented and what that means, yeah, what Scott just said, you know, recharge on the Great Dune is not going to uh help. The 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 salt, the non-salt tolerant, you know, species along Cedar Avenue. So you you gotta kind of look and what where are you doing and what's doing it where? At the same time, you look at the science that DGS brought is provided as the background.
Steve, are you in a position to talk about um? Media remediation techniques that towns themselves have taken on, you you mentioned Montauk, for example. Uh, are towns looking to pave their roads with impervious surface to sort of? Or can you talk to some of those types of techniques?
So I I can talk to it in a number of different ways, but yeah, there's. Goes back to a couple of of different aspects, right? Scott hit on it and I'll hit on the same piece. If you can not allow the 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 stormwater or the, I don't care if it's even stormwater, but the the rainwater. To concentrate, it's a lot easier to handle, it's a lot easier to get in the ground, you don't have to have as much as much engineering, if you will, to do that. In other areas where they have to do that, it becomes a balance. I mean, there are, there are places where they are doing more impervious, you know, or porous pavement. You know, um porous pavement, uh particularly in a coastal environment, requires a good bit of maintenance. It it, you know, the the it's the it's sand filled, the pores that are there get sand filled, it has to be vacuumed. Um, what Scott, what Scott was saying also about is the subbase, is it is it being hit by, you know. By saltwater, what's the chemistry of the saltwater doing during the storm events, the other pieces? Um, so but the answer is yes, I mean, people are doing porous pavement. Um, people are looking at, you know, um even, you know, porous pavement for, you know. Uh pavers, whatever, with, you know, certain spacings for residential lots. Um, there's, you know, a a lot of, a lot of the recharge. The I've got to put it this way, a lot of the engineered recharge aspects are where you have a commercial entity. That it's worth it for them to build and maintain the engineered recharge facilities. You know, to actually do it in a concentrated fashion to maximize whatever they need to do elsewhere. That economics doesn't necessarily work, that may work for commercial or industrial facilities, but doesn't necessarily work for municipal. For taxpayer rate structure or for individual or for individuals. So then you go to the more, I'm going to call it diffuse recharge, non-engineered aspects. Um, that stop it from concentrating and are and are and are cheaper.
I have one last question. Would either of you be willing to opine regarding the location of our wastewater treatment plant?
I mean, I in 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 what way?
What was the question?
I mean, is it wise to, should we be thinking about where it's located or relocating it?
Oh, I mean, I I think that's that's an issue all up and down the, you know, whatever coast you're looking at is in that some, I I can't. I can speak to the the concept of, you know, you look for infrastructure protection and resiliency anywhere you are. In the coast with sea level rise becomes, you know, a bigger, a stronger consideration.
So in terms, in terms of the questions that were submitted in advance, I just wanted to to check in and get a sense of.
And since Scott started off by the technical stuff, I can, I can go over the um. Yes, some of the more administrative, I'm not going to use the word legal, um but maybe that's what it is. Um, one of one of the inque- questions was, um. It spoke to does the source water protection law, um uh grandfather aspects in. Remember this, then that's why I kind of opened what I did, the source water, if the source water protection law said you have to consider these areas in your protective ordinance. We did not, the state did not say, and you have the grandfather existing. It just says municipalities have to consider these areas in their protective ordinances. The answer that's non-answer, but the answer to that question is, that's an option that's on the table for whatever municipalities are required to develop. Those ordinances, right? Um, we didn't prescribe it, we didn't prohibit it. It's it's so, does the source water law um require it? No, it's a tool in your toolbox if you choose to use it. Um, another at question was, um, does the source water protection law? Um, that says promote groundwater recharge back to pre-developed state. Um, I I don't, again, it's the, the law doesn't prescribe that. Um, I can speak to what I've seen in many jurisdictions that have had um source water protection ordinances, recharge based ordinances in place. And it's almost always a no additional harm perspective, right? You take whatever the property is there, if you're, if it's, if it's undeveloped, that's, there's a volume going in the ground on a property that's undeveloped. Then the, if you develop it, then it's a matter of what do you do and how do you compensate for how much is is lost? If there's a redevelopment, it's not recharging as much as if it was undeveloped to begin with. So it's no additional harm in that context is what I've seen other jurisdictions do. It's not a requirement and certainly not the state saying we're trying to get recharge back as if no humans lived on in Delaware. It's not, that's not feasible, but um I think it's very, very common that no additional harm perspective. Pre, post-development recharge needs to equal pre-development recharge. Let's see, they have. Come on to there. Um, then I think.
Steve and and Scott, what one question that came in was regarding the the twenty percent threshold. When when we initially adopted an ordinance um in two thousand eight. I I'm guessing we use the model ordinance which has the twenty percent. And one of the questions was, does it have to be twenty percent?
Again, I mean, I I would, I would say, you know, it goes back to what Scott was talking about. You start seeing some issues once you get above certain percentages on what the runoff does, right? On what, where this water, Scott said it a number of times, the water has to go somewhere. Just because you're not recharging it on the property doesn't mean it magically disappears, it has to go somewhere. So the twenty percent starts when you start seeing offsite impacts, right? And then up to a certain point when you start seeing dramatic offsite impacts. In terms of recharge volume, you know, it's not a, it's not a magical, okay. If you do twenty two and a half percent, everything's going to be okay. Um, you know, it's it's a matter of the site specifics, it's a matter of what's on the site. Even though, even though it's mapped as excellent recharge area, not every property within there has exactly the same properties. Um, you know, at, you know, in terms of contour, slope, all the other aspects of it. Um, so again, the state did not say thou shalt have a minimum of twenty percent. It's just the science is saying that's typically where we see the start and that's the jurisdictions all all over the place that have been doing that.
Joe, you have a question?
I actually have two questions. Until uh Rob Morgan brought it up, the word aquifer wasn't even mentioned. About recharging the aquifers. And the other question I have is, nobody seems to be mentioning evaporation. I mean, that evaporation should be part of this mix. And I'm just curious about how much of rainfall. Storm or otherwise goes back up rather than going down. Any answers?
Um, the architect take a shot at that. Yeah, we didn't use the word aquifer, I'm sorry, we should have. Any. By body of rock or sediment in the subsurface saturated with water that yields water to a well is an aquifer, right? So we are talking about aquifers, we just didn't use that label on them. Uh, the part about evaporation is important. More important is the the other part of that equation where water is lost from the landscape and that's what plants pump out into the atmosphere. It's called transpiration, commonly we we uh mush those two words together and call them evapotranspiration. That is the biggest term in Delaware's water budget, right? So we have about forty to forty four inches a year. Over most of the state, evapotranspiration is twenty eight to thirty two inches a year. It's the biggest part of the water budget. So it can, you know, between those two, transpiration is much bigger than evaporation. And that's why uh some uh water management strategies use rain gardens. To manage runoff, right? They put in water tolerant plants that tend to pump out a lot of water that gets in there. They could tolerate having their roots wet. So it is part of the equation, uh but. Uh, you know, you still have on the, you know, where you are, the typical excellent recharge area sixteen, you could have sixteen inches of. Of uh infiltration a year of the forty four. That means evapotranspiration is smaller in that area. If you go down to down the ladder to the lower recharge categories, you're looking six to eight inches a year of infiltration for the lowest category. Uh, and that, after that, then the bulk of that water runs off, right? It gets into the surface system, it might wind up in a, in a swamp or a ditch and that. And be evaporate or transpire, but most of it runs off and it winds up as stream flow somewhere.
Yeah, and I think I'm I'm going to add here, Scott, to what Scott just said. The 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 mapping is the recharge potential mapping. It's actually, it's actually called that because recharge. I think, correct me if I if I misspeak here, Scott, but recharge by definition is the volume of water that actually reaches. The aquifer that it's that it's going down into. It's not just precipitation, it's not just infiltration. Um, and it's, and that's, that's a seasonal component. One of the questions, one of the questions in here, I had to deal with the, with seasonal high water table. And the reason why there is a seasonal high water table is exactly what Scott had talked to for the most part. It's the precipitation, when you don't have the high evapotranspiration, right? That's when you get most of your recharge. It's not a linear recharge across the across the year. In the summer season, when the leaves are, leaves are on and the trees are all growing, the grass is growing well. Um, less water infiltrates, less water recharges. But in, you know, this time of year, Edward getting getting a leaf on, but this time of year, it's as wet as it's been. This is a great time of year for recharge and the water table responds, the season, the seasonal high water table. Is because the recharge is making it there during this time of the year and the water table rises accordingly.
Yeah, I would, I would amplify that, maybe a little modification. If you were talking to a, somebody from agronomy, farmer, government official that works in the agricultural sector. They consider any water that gets into the subsurface to be recharged, right? They recharge soil moisture. Soil moisture is a very important thing for agricultural production. If you don't have soil moisture, you don't grow anything. And that that applies to whether, you know, whether it's a residential area too. You gotta maintain soil moisture to grow your plants. Um, so you don't want to be too prescriptive in how you consider recharge, whether it has to reach the water table or not. You want to get it in the ground and keep it and make it available for uh to to for storage as a buffer against saltwater intrusion. Um, and all the things that, all the issues that that brings, but you also want to keep uh recharge in the soil profile to keep your plants happy. So anything you can do to reduce runoff and improve infiltration is a bonus for managing stormwater. And dealing with the long-term implications of saltwater intrusion.
Is there state guidance on good recharge areas, you know, the next level, I guess, down from excellent recharge in terms of, again, lot coverage or what have you?
Um, I don't think any but, any local government has picked that up. In a way, in a way, when we developed the mapping tech technique, we didn't want to designate fifty percent of the state as worthy of protection. Right? We picked the best of the best. It came out to about twelve percent, I think, thirteen percent between Kent and Sussex counties. Uh, we thought that was a reasonable ask at the time that to protect those kinds of, those areas with those kinds of characteristics. Um, if you want to get more, a more holistic look at how you manage your water falling in your, falling as rainfall in your town. Uh, the recharge mapping products lend themselves well to that kind of engineering approach. To how you manage the water volume and how much, you know, partitioning the water between overland runoff and infiltration.
Nancy had her her hand up.
Rob's got a question.
Well, um, Scott, you, you spoke earlier about one option that municipalities have is grandfathering. And you also said that, um, I think it was that one perspective, a good perspective, as I, as I inferred from you, was to do no additional harm. Were you speaking from the perspective of when the state adopted the law? Or can we take that perspective without looking back, just going forward?
And that was, you said, Scott, that was, that was me that, that said it just to make sure. I just want to make sure if anybody was just listening and this is Steve. Um, the, the, I guess I'll put it this way, there is no, there is no definitive baseline that's associated in the source water law, right? So, so where, and I said this before, for other municipalities, where you draw the timeframe, if you wanted to say things before X date are grandfathered, that's again, why the, the, the authority or the specifics, the details were put in the local jurisdiction's hands. Um, that, you know, I, I'm saying that because at the time, I remember specifically some of the conversations with the legislators at the time saying, it's not Denrick's job to tell them what to do, but to give them the tools to do it. So I think in, 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 if it's a roundabout answer to your question, I don't think there's a reason why, I think you guys have the flexibility to say what those time periods are and what makes sense. If to Scott's point, you can, you could look at this very holistically. You could look at the recharge mapping products that DGS has put together. You could look at the soils mapping products that, that are, that are out there. You could start looking at the impervious coverage estimates. I can't remember the last one that was done for the area. And you can start seeing how these numbers add up and what the volumes are. Um, it's, that's not an, necessarily an easy thing to do, but it is doable, probably wouldn't necessarily be cheap. Um, but to, well, I guess the long-winded answer, if you want to grandfather, if that's something you need to consider, then you got to figure out the time, go ahead and do that. I said about the no, no additional harm. That's what I've seen as the basis in most of the municipalities, most of the jurisdictions that I've seen, be it in Delaware, Maryland, other locations is the baseline that they are saying is, we're not trying to go back to, you know, pristine, open fields. We're trying to make sure things don't get worse from this point forward.
Great, thank you. Nancy, you had a question?
When we talk about no additional harm and assuming that we're, we're starting from some baseline, whether it's today or, or whatever, but we're starting from a baseline. One discussion that we've had is around the ability to have certain best management practices that can offset uh, some, some additional coverage of a lot. And my question is, where do we stand in terms of our, our scientific knowledge of what's really equivalent, you know, if you're, if you're paving over uh, uh, an additional 1% of your lot and you're putting in a rain garden, for example, or you're putting in, I mean, there's a whole list of, of things that people can, can do. Um, how developed is our knowledge of what would give you an offset in a sense for that additional 1% of paving?
It's, so it's a difficult question to answer on a general scale. Um, what I, what I can say is a large chunk of it comes down to the effective permeability, whether it's porous pavement, whether it's, you know, um, open, open ground. Um, there are aspects there that you, that can look at as where it's going to sound. Some of the manufacturers of the materials, pavers, the, the other materials give estimates on what that is. Um, it's also then what is, what is directly below that, what is the subbase, what are you putting down? So porous, you know, porous pavers on top of highly compacted earth doesn't really get you as much as porous pavers on top of properly maintained substrate. So, um, there's a, a lot of pieces that, that go into it, but it really comes down to there's quantifications of runoff curves, what comes off of the lands, what comes off of the material, of the material that's there, the landscape pieces there, the effective permeability of the materials that you're putting in place and also the retention. So if, if it, if it can't go away, you know, if it's, if it's a shallow depression and it can't go away, can't run off, even if it infiltrates slowly, that's going to be an effective infiltration. Now, some of it may evaporate more quickly. That's got to come into consideration too, right? But if it's to do, you know, if you're on a, on a steeper slope, look at my hands, my hands are, talk with my hands out of the frame. If you're on a steep, a steeper slope, you don't really have that type of an option. So it's, there's a whole bunch of pieces that you look at, whether it's, you know, a rooftop runoff going into a, you know, into a vegetated swale or, or grass or, or sand line or gravel line swell, whether it's porous pavement with a, a sandy underlay, subbase. Um, you have to look at kind of that whole, all those tools and pick the one that's right for the specific aspects of the site that you have. Um, so it's again, a long-winded answer. There's, there's a lot of, you can do it site specifically, you know, by looking at infiltration tests, you know, all the other stuff. Or you can do it by saying, okay, we're going to assume this is 20% effective permeability. So therefore we're going to, other stuff's going to run off and we're going to assume this is at least meeting into, going into the subsurface. Um, it's, it's, I think it's cost prohibitive to do every single, every single type of test on every single site everywhere. But I think some standard BMPs, um, that have, have published rec, you know, documentation. And I think we actually have it. I didn't go, I apologize. I didn't go back to the appendices of the BMP document to look at some of the studies that have been done from the, some of the other pieces that were there. But I, I can try to find that and send it to Anne Marie as well for you guys. Looking at different methodologies and what the manufacturers or what some of the early studies on, on porous pavement or porous concrete or, um, or vegetated swales and other aspects, I can see if I can give that to you, Anne Marie.
Thank you.
Yes. So Steve, you're, when you say the guidance document, is that from your storm, the Denrick Stormwater Program?
It's, it's that. And then we also had from the Source Water Program, there was also, um, uh, some guidance documents on, on BMPs for, for infiltration recharge.
Okay. Um, the other thing I was going to mention to you in our neighborhood here is a organization called the Center for Watershed Protection. They're located in Ellicott City, Maryland. And they have a wonderful collection of technical documents that deal with infiltration practices. All of them are available for free. Um, where the rubber meets the road is, uh, if you have to get into an engineering solution, somebody, some engineer is going to have to do it. Uh, but you can use their guidance to look at what things are available, what types of credits you get for the different types of practices. And, uh, it could be from a holistic view for that whole area, you could say, we want a mix of these types of practices over these types of areas to reduce runoff and, and get our effective impervious cover number as low as possible.
Thank you. That's helpful information. Tim, you had a question?
Uh, yes, Scott, what was the name of that, uh, organization again in Ellicott City?
The Center for Watershed Protection.
Thank you. And I do have a question. Watershed Protection. Hold on a second, please. Yes, my question is this. Approximately 20 years ago, you, uh, mapped the, and established what is now known as this excellent recharge area that extends out, uh, along the Gilznick Road area. And during the last 20 years, there has been a lot of development. A lot of change has been made to what used to be cornfields and, uh, so forth. And my question is, how much change to a parcel of land? Uh, can a, like, does it take to change its capability to still be considered an excellent recharge area? I can clarify that if that's not clear.
No, I, I think I understand what you're saying. If you cover it up with houses in, houses in blacktop, the, the ground underneath hasn't changed. It's still an excellent reprotect, you know, excellent recharge potential because the, the ground is going to take the water. It's what's happened on top keeps the water from infiltrating. Um, but at the same time, with, with the way that stormwater and development practices have happened over the years, the water that comes off those surfaces goes somewhere. And hopefully they, they have put engineering practices in to infiltrate as much of that as they can. So they don't overwhelm the, the surface drainage system and, you know, damage aquatic habitat through erosion or sedimentation or poor water quality. Um, so.
Right. But you know, as well as I do, the practice of course is that the developer will use a stormwater ma, management tool called some kind of a pond, right? A wet pond typically. And I assume that that is a, an effort to manage stormwater so that the runoff is somewhat managed, is it not?
Yes.
And like, where I'm going, go ahead.
Yeah, wet ponds are one of the stormwater management practices. Um, I would say in the Lewis area, if it's a wet pond, you're probably looking at the water table at the bottom of that pond. So yeah, what's your next question?
Well, where I'm going with it, what I was wondering is, is that at the time that you mapped the area, it was before the, the soil had been, the earth had been moved, had been, the contours had been changed to accommodate residential development and to, uh, co, prior to roads being put in, prior to infrastructure being placed. And my question is, is that after those improvements have been made, does that also alter the value that that land, that those parcels of land offer with respect to excellent recharge?
Okay, um, so from a, from the tech, purely technical standpoint, the recharge potential mapping horizon was 20 feet thick. And so, okay, land surface modifications don't change 20 feet of contour. Uh, they might change five, right? The next thing from a practical standpoint, they're moving earth around on that property. They're not bringing stuff in from outside that's got different, right? So they took sand from one plot place and pushed it somewhere else and really haven't changed much at all.
And wait, wait, what, what makes you say that? How do you know that? How do you know that dirt wasn't brought in?
I can't say I know that dirt wasn't brought in. I would just say that, that would be pretty unusual for people to bring dirt in. They got to manage all the stuff they already dug up on their property. So, you know, case by case, you could look at what's hap, what's happened and you could go look at it. But in general, if they added only a couple of feet of fill, they didn't change anything significantly. A two-foot horizon change doesn't change much about recharge mapping.
I see.
I'm, you had a question? So we, someone made a reference earlier to the fact that we've got multiple things that we're considering. Maybe I'm mixing this meeting with one that was earlier today, but I'm curious if either Steve or, uh, Scott could speak to the importance of that sort of freshwater lens that we've been talking about and the health of the wetlands that we all value in and around Lewis. Uh, and, and, and on a secondary note, maybe it's not connected, but building on something that Scott said earlier about changes in plants and evapotranspiration. I'm wondering if, you know, trees, I would imagine are pretty darned effective pumps um, that can help remove stormwater and so on. In some cases, if we're killing them because of salinity, you know, are we going to do as well with a saltwater assemblage of plants as we do, do with a freshwater assemblage? So two questions you guys can conflate them or not.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. I think, I, I think it's, so a couple of pieces. The, 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 the wetlands, most of the wetlands that are around, around this area are, are the tidal wetlands, right? They're, they're, they are the salt marsh tidal wetlands. Um, there's fringe, uh, when you get up there, depending on where they are, they may have a very small fringe that may be, maybe non-tidal, maybe freshwater. Um, but water that's being retained, typically what Scott said is if you start having poorly drained areas, those things start promulgating, then you start getting fragmites, you know, in, in those type of areas as well. Um, so it, it's, it's not like we are maintaining some of the pristine Delmarva bays that we see somewhere else that are freshwater wetlands that are solely fed by groundwater, right? Um, that's, that's not really what, what we, what we have here for the most part. What I don't know, and I'm not going to try to tell you that I do, is I don't know how the vegetative communities along the, the bayfront there um, would, would transition if the freshwater minimizes. I don't know. Um, you know, you have to look at what species are salt tolerant, what species aren't. Um, you know, that whole aspect. I think it's, it's safe to assume that if that transition does occur, the vegetation will respond and it may not be in a favorable manner. Um, maybe, you know, maybe some, some plants will take to it, other plants won't. Um, like Scott said, the ghost forests up and down the coast, you can see what, you know, you go, you go to some of those areas, you can see exactly what's happening. It's, it's, it's two ways it's happening. It's, you know, it's some recurring inundation, overland inundation, but it's also recurring, you know, saltwater intrusion coming in on the fringe. You can't change something that's sitting there, you know, and established communities for decades. You can't change that and expect it just to continue to be.
Right. May already see some of that with the infiltration of, or the growth of fragmites in the area. Uh, that's been, you know, in reference to the earlier comment.
Yeah. And the other thing, just going back to what, you know, we keep on hitting on this, that if it doesn't go in the ground, it has to run off somewhere. And obviously all the coastal communities, drainage is a, is a huge issue, right? When the tides, when the tide's up, you know, your storm sewers don't work, you know, the swales don't drain. The additional recharge that's not going in the ground now becomes runoff. Those tails in those swales become longer. That, you know, that, that stays wetter longer, you know, you have, you have a larger footprint of all of those. Every place you think you have too much water, when the tide's up, you start having more runoff, it's going to go inland further. That's what it's going to have to do.
Mayor, we had, um, some of the questions that were submitted before I actually pulled Charlie onto the panel because I think we might want to ask Charlie to, to address this a little bit. Um, that one of the questions was where we do have a, a high groundwater table and you have water within two feet of, of the surface, can these, um, can these BMPs actually work? And then there was a question about the, the cost of the BMPs. Um, and, and obviously they need to be engineered. So obviously you don't know all of that because it's all site specific. But can you address that from the engineering perspective?
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head. It is site specific because I know, you know, when we do porous asphalt pavement on the beach side, it's because it works. It's because the underlying soils allow for it and the groundwater table is not too high. And, you know, as we've often talked, when you're on the Cedar to Bay Avenue side, you know, the groundwater is not quite as much of an issue, but it is an issue as you move towards the canal. So just something to consider. BMPs, you know, porous asphalt's one and a half times to two times as expensive as regular asphalt. Every, every BMP that's on our current list of BMPs has an associated cost. It's kind of hard to give a general answer as to what they would cost. But, you know, obviously there's some cost involved. I will say that what GMB has been encouraging through our discussions at the committee level is that the BMPs that are part of what we're going to, may or may not require be the big ticket items like permeable paver driveways and, and decks that are permeable. Um, those kinds of things that you really get a lot of infiltration out of as compared to, you know, uh, a rain barrel or even a small BMP on a residential lot. So just to keep those things in mind as we move forward.
Okay.
Anne Marie, I got your list of those questions that I'd like to give them some, some, some further thought and I can respond to them a little better probably.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there other questions here? Here are the other questions.
I have a question.
Okay.
This is a following up on a comment that was made during, uh, Scott's presentation to be, uh, the BPW. I re-listened to that, uh, that presentation yesterday. And, uh, the question, uh, is going to tie into uh, the question of how, what the effect of additional, an additional well would be on the, uh, on the aquifer in relationship to Canary Creek?
Okay, so, uh, that's a real tough one. That's a tough one to answer without any specific information. With, you need to, you know, first, where is that well going to go? How deep is it going to be? How much water are they going to pull out of it? Uh, with that type of information, we could make a first cut assessment of what. Uh, with that type of information, we could make a first cut assessment of what impacts that would have on the surrounding aquifer. How much drawdown, uh, what's its capture zone for source water, et cetera. Uh, but exclusive of that information, we really can't make much assessment of that.
Okay, yeah, during that meeting, uh, there was a suggestion from Darren that he was gonna speak to you offline about that. And I was just wondering if there was any, any follow-up that you could offer us at this time?
I have, no, no additional info has come my way since then.
Okay, thank you.
Joe, you had a question?
Yeah, uh, I happen to notice in some of the, uh, public notices, uh, from Denrick, when they review our agricultural wells, some of the irrigation systems in Sussex County, they pull like a million gallons a day from the aquifer. This is for an agricultural, which is basically, talk about evaporation, most of it, this is, goes away in the air. But a little, uh, a little residential type use for a well would basically, this, it's, the agricultural use here dwarfs the residential use. But, yeah, the, the irrigation systems are huge. So, just to let you know.
Yeah, the, the, the irrigation systems, the allocate, you're talking about the allocation permits. Any, any, any well pumping in excess of fifty thousand gallons a day, um, has to get an allocation permit. So you will see, you're absolutely right, some of the larger, hundred acre irrigation, irrigation systems, um, they, they pump substantially. Um, and, you know, and the largest, the lo- most of the largest of those, I think, I think that, that one of the largest production wells, um, in the state is over in, in the Laurel area. Um, if, we wouldn't want to do that same thing here coastally because we'd have some issues with what, what we're going on. The piece that you need to look at, that's kind of, um, um, it's, it's difficult for us is, uh, the cumulative impacts of the non-allocated. Um, if, 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 you know, if you saw the, the dense, I'll put it this way, the density of lawn irrigation wells in coastal Sussex is by far the highest density of anywhere in the state. Makes sense, right? The sandy soils, you want your grass to look good, you know, all the other stuff. Um, I don't know, you know, what the, you know, that's, they're not required to get allocated. They do, they pump less than fifty thousand gallons a day, but when you have four hundred of them in a community, it's not nothing, right?
We don't have any.
So, you don't, in, in, in Lewis, but if you start, if you start looking at what Scott was talking about, your source water area, outside of your wellhead area, um, you know, I, I could, I could show you, I could show you a map of you. If you're interested to see it, I'm gladly show it to you, a map of all the, all the withdrawals in the Lewis Rehoboth area. It's kind of, um, kind of daunting.
I bet, yeah. So much of the county land probably has wells.
Yep. Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, I, Scott and Steve, thank you both very much for taking time to be with us today and answering the questions we have. It's been most helpful. And if you can get back to us with the additional questions that Anne Marie had submitted to you with some thoughts on those, that would be also much appreciated. Obviously, we're trying to work through, uh, what, how we'll move forward and hopefully we'll have something, uh, in the near future for you all to review.
Ted, can I just echo your thanks to both, uh, Steve and Scott and Anne Marie for helping put this together on behalf of Lewis Planning Commission? We've talked to Scott and Steve before offline and at other forums, but now we're getting down to where the rubber meets the road and we do value their input. And I know the council will, whatever recommendation we make from the Planning Commission, council will continue to evaluate all of the various points that they've made today among others. And we do appreciate everyone's time and attention to this, um, because it is a real issue that we all have to address. And I wanna thank them and all the commissioners for, uh, being available.
Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.